I didn't know anything about that.
Huh?
Mayor. It's on the agenda?
Rotate. Rotate. That's what we, what we-
Yeah, ro- rotate, okay, rotate this. That'd be good.
Good solution.
Huh?
Good solution.
Yeah, I think that'd be good for everybody. I think everybody got a shot. Once you, once you do that, you won't want to do this. I had, I, I went to the Mr. Music, you know, they had an old recital? And, and they were so cute, all little kids, and so I said, "I, I understand that you probably don't, could not even imagine me being in a piano recital," I said, "but I would used to be, my mother used to make me take piano lessons." And I said, "I was not very good at that, so she decided I ought to take voice lessons." And so when I took voice lessons and I was doing a recital, I said, "It just happened to be that time of my life when my voice changed, and my voice changed in the middle of the song." And I can tell you the name of the song and the whole bit. And I said, "But, you know, for the young kiddos," I said, "I hope you have-"
Okay, it's 5:15.
Stella, according to my, you know, little iPod or iPhone or whatever, it's 5:15. And we call this meeting-
Okay. Let me read the call.
And I, and I think also that we need to, somebody left me this thing, I guess it's you, that we need to make sure that we speak into the microphone for, they can record all the motions in second-
Sometimes I don't, I don't know who seconded it, or if somebody voted against. So I need some clear, uh, information-
Okay.
So I can hear you. Okay, let me read the, the notice. Notice of Public Meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville. Pursuant to Chapter 551, Title 5 of the Texas Government Code, the Texas Open Meetings Act, notice is hereby given to the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas. In accordance with Article 5, Section 12 of the Charter of Said City, will convene an executive session and a special meeting on Tuesday, December the 13th, 2011, at 5:15 PM and 6 PM in the commission chambers on the second floor of the Brownsville City Hall, located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Executive Session Item A, Attorney Consultation Pursuant to Section 551.071, 1 and 2 of the Texas Government Code in connections with, in connection with pending litigation, styled and numbered BFFA versus Brownsville, Cause Number 2011-DCL-5738-E, and related legal matters involving the city's rights, duties, obligations, and authority in connection with collective bargaining labor agreement between the city and the fire department bargaining unit under Chapter 124, 174 of the Texas Local Government Code. Executive Session Item B, Attorney Consultation Pursuant to Section 551.071 and 551.072 of the Texas Government Code regarding real estate acquisition.
Mayor, I move we go into executive session.
Go ahead, a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 We'll adjourn to executive session.
Ay, damas, presco, okay?
Not for public use.
Not for public use, that's sad. It's, it's, um... I don't know. Oh, it's a pen. From whom?
This is from you.
Mmm, this is nice.
Two minutes, I think.
Just dragging them. Two more minutes, countdown.
School breakfast at school? Food services, I don't know.
The clock's wrong, that is.
I was trying to check, I was in the city.
Yeah, one minute.
Magical hour. Six o'clock.
Pledge of Allegiance?
Yeah, six o'clock, we'll, we'll call a meeting to order.
Then we have the pledge of allegiance.
Okay, the pledge of allegiance. Bean, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to a republic which for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Honored the Texas flag. Pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one individual.
Sorry about that, Bean.
Let us pray.
Brad.
Father God, we thank you for this great city that we're blessed to live in. We thank you for blessing us with the rain we've had recently. Lord, we ask you to continue to bring our hearts to you so that you can continue to bless us with the things you desire to bless us with. Lord, I thank you for the trip that our mayor and others took to New York City. We ask you to, to bring us the fruits of those economic benefits from that trip and from others. Lord, we ask you to lead and guide our city manager and others as we look for the new police chief. Lead and guide them in that search. And, all the way around, Lord, we ask you to lead and guide our leaders. Direct their thoughts, their motives, and their decisions to be good for the city of Brownsville. In the name of Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Amen.
Okay, Stella, I think we now go to the action items discussed in executive session.
Action on items discussed in executive session, Item A, consideration and appropriate action, if any, to ratify the collective bargaining labor agreement between the City of Brownsville and the Brownsville Fire Department Bargaining Unit for fiscal year 2011 through 2014.
Motion to accept the recommendations of, of the council.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to, uh, accept the, um, recommendation of council with regards to the collective bargaining agreement. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Nay.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Did you get that, Madam Secretary? Okay. Um, the next item, I think, um, with regards to, uh, Action B, there's the first two items. Um, do I hear a motion to, John, would, you're asking those to be tabled, is that correct?
I want to table the first two items, Mayor.
Second.
All those in favor of tabling the first two items?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, John, the third one.
In response to your question, yes, I was going to ask if I could be tabled.
We're, we're Speedy Gonzalez tonight.
Um, the, uh, we're asking you to authorize the purchase of the premises at 1301 East Madison Street. Uh, that's the Queto Building, we'd be buying that from the college. Uh, the purchase price is $500,000, fully supported by an appraisal. Uh, the closing cost may add a little bit, may take away a little bit, but it's going to be right at $500,000. And the resolution you have in front of you, uh, not only authorizes the purchase, but designates the city manager, deputy city manager, and assistant city manager as the persons who can sign the papers for the city.
Okay, I want to entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you, John, and, um, I want just for the public record, uh, that I think this is a, a good acquisition for the city, and I hopefully it also helps, uh, the Texas Southmost College in their future endeavors. So it should be a win-win situation for all, thank you.
I would also like to place something on the record, please, that purchase of this property should be used specifically for city purposes and not for rental, for private individuals.
That, that'll be, it, it, it was intended to do that, so, thank you, Melissa, appreciate it. Um, the next one is the mayor's report, and I, um, would like to take this opportunity to first of all, um, wish everybody a happy holiday season on behalf of myself personally and as mayor, and on behalf of the city commission and the city. Um, I would like to just make a couple of announcements. Um, the, um, I think some of you may have noticed, and was mentioned by Reverend, um, that we did go to New York City. Um, had a very fruitful and meaningful, um, uh, meeting for the couple of days. Uh, did a lot of media outlets, met with some potential clients that are coming, hopefully coming to Brownsville, and some that are already here. Um, and I wanted to, uh, actually commend the Economic Development Group, uh, for some fine planning and, um, for a very successful trip. Uh, like I think some of you may have read in the paper, I don't know all the metrics of how do you, how do you measure success, um, but I do want to know that your city is out there being promoted, and that we're open for business. Um, on kind of a different note, I did get a call from Matamoros, um, officials with regard to an article that came out in one of the papers. Uh, somehow or another, it was interpreted that we may have said something that may have been adverse to the city of Matamoros. If something was said, it was, it was certainly not meant to be adverse to Matamoros. We are working with our sister city, and so if I said something, I apologize to all of the, to people in Matamoros. Um, but it certainly has been always my intent to know that we are considered brothers and sisters, and that the river that runs between us, between us has absolutely no bearing other than a geographical, uh, creation of God. So, with that being said, the additional thing I'd like to kind of bring up is that, um, I want the, the entire community to know that, um, with regards to Larry Brown and company out there at the airport, um, we are up 6% of airport employments, um, from last year. Uh, we are the only ones in the valley that are up. Uh, Harlingen is down, McAllen is down. Um, Brownsville leads all the valley airports in yield, and rate of revenues increase, and increases in average fare. So, my hats off to the group that's working out there. Um, I think it's probably a concerted effort of all of the citizens of Brownsville. I think we started out, the administration, by saying, "Fly Brownsville," and hopefully somebody's listening to us. Um, but you are to be congratulated, and I think the city of Brownsville needs to take heart that we're on our way, uh, to a very successful, uh, year in 2011, and even a better year in 2012. Um, with that, it concludes my report. I don't know, Bean, you, um, you gave us all pins, so you must be doing well as well. But thank you very much, and, and, and our sincerest of holiday wishes to the, uh, to your group. Commissioners' report?
Um, yes, for wellness, I'd like to take a moment, since the season is, uh, the end of the year already, to let you know that the next, uh, 2012 season for the Brownsville Biggest Loser Challenge will begin January the 6th. Sign-up will be at the Southmost Public Library from 5 to 8, and January the 7th at Linear Park from 9 to 12. And this season promises to be even better than the last with more free educational opportunities and classes and events. We are collecting more and more partners from our business community across our city. Our midpoint speaker will be a woman who actually is employed by HCA. HCA is the parent company of Valley Regional Hospital, and she, uh, lives and works in, I believe it's Tennessee, and won, uh, one of the recent Biggest Loser Challenges on TV. We will also be attempting to break another world's record at the end of the season, and this year it will be Zumba for Children. So, please take note of all of that, and, uh, remember that all of the events are free, and for all of our participation, thank you.
Thank you, Rose. Presentations, Charlie, is that?
Yes, sir. Mayor, members of the commission, please help me welcome the Employee of the Month for December, uh, one of our firefighters, um, Mr. Joel Rodriguez. What? You gotta speak in the mic, so. Joel has been a firefighter for the City of Brownsville for 11 years, and the last three years he's been one of our fire inspectors, and, uh, obviously his responsibilities is to, uh, investigate arson. He is well skilled in that, in that field. Uh, he is, we are very proud of the fact that he has created an alliance with, uh, state, with city and, uh, and state departments and federal agencies. He has established a working relationship with, of course, our, our police department, uh, BISD, United States Customs, United States Marshal's Office, and Cameron County District Attorney's Office, and he is well respected by each and every one of those entities. Uh, what we're very proud of, of, about, about Joel is that he is a volunteer, and he has taken our fire explorers groups to many statewide and nationwide competitions. He's done very well, he's come back with awards. He is very, uh, proud of that fact, I think he's more proud of that than, than the fact that he is one of our, uh, great fire inspectors in the city of Brownsville. So, as Employee of the Month, he gets, uh, let me see, here's a, he's got a lot of pins, so we're going to give him another one. And, uh, the watch that we give out, sorry, where did I drop that? I dropped a warranty. And the plaque for Employee of the Month for, uh, December. And he's eligible for Employee of the Month next year, which he's going to have to wait a while, 12 months or so. Uh, we just had our banquet, I want to thank the commission that, that showed up and helped us out with the, with the awards banquet, and of course, our Employee of the Month, uh, I'm, I'm sorry, the Employee of the Year, uh, was Ivan Reyes. So, thank you for your participation in that event, and we'll see Joel there and see if he receives the award next year. Congratulations, Joel.
Uh, Mayor, City Commissioners, uh, thank you for this award, appreciate it. It's, uh, it's a great honor and a privilege to be named Employee of the Month. Also, I'd like to thank all my, uh, chiefs, the fire marshal, for helping me out with a lot of stuff that, without him, you know, I'd be lost there. So, he's, uh, he's a real good asset there, and, uh, and we'll miss him. Also, I'd like to thank all the firefighters that I work with, uh, they're really a bunch of nice people, and I couldn't do without them also, so, thank you again, appreciate it.
Well, congratulations.
Friendship of Women, presentation?
Hello.
Hi, good evening.
How are you? Thank you for joining us today. Um, wanted to welcome you, and congratulations on your new building.
Thank you.
And provide you with an opportunity to give us an update on your services and the building itself.
Yes, thank you very much, Commissioner Zamora, and good evening to the rest of you commissioners, Mayor. My name is Lily Champion, I'm the director for the Friendship of Women, and, uh, this is Claudia Selda, she's our prevention specialist. Uh, we are just here to give you a brief overview of, uh, as Commissioner Zamora mentioned, we have moved to a new, uh, facility. We're now at the Lakeview Medical Plaza, we're providing, uh, still counseling outreach services to, uh, families, individuals, women's, and women and children. Uh, and some occasions, uh, men who are, uh, in abusive situations. We have our, continue to have our battery intervention prevention program. We used to have that housed in the, uh, ITech Community Center, or rather, uh, ITech Building, but now we are able to, uh, not have to worry about paying rent on that anymore. We, we have our own facility to house that at our old building, which is at, on, uh, Old Portisville Road. Uh, we're always looking for student interns, and we, we welcome the community to come and visit us. Certainly welcome you all to come and visit us. Uh, we did have a recent opening last week, our grand opening, and we missed you there, but I know that there was many other events going on in the community, uh, that particular evening. So, uh, hopefully at another occasion, you can come over and visit us. We've been in Brownsville now for 35 years, or going on 35 years as a nonprofit organization, uh, providing, again, uh, free services to victims of, uh, family violence and sexual assault. And so, uh, this is a very big, uh, step for us to be able to have another new facility where we're able to offer, uh, our counseling in-house, as opposed to going out to the community and having various groups, uh, with different entities. We're able to now provide that in-house. We have a children's, uh, wonderful little playroom for our kids now that they're welcome to come in with their moms and, uh, wait there while their, their mom is being seen, you know, going through an intake if there's been an abusive situation. Um, but we work together still collaboratively with several entities here in the city of Brownsville, uh, such as the Brownsville Police Department and the Sheriff's Office, um, the hospitals who do a lot of referrals to us when there's sexual assaults. We have staff that are available 24/7, and we never close our facility. That's the wonderful thing about it, is that we're available, we're a resource to many individuals. Uh, we never know when someone close to us is going to be in a situation where there's, there's been some abuse going on. And if we can help them out, then we will do that. Uh, there are no charges for our services. Um, we do, we are solely maintained by, uh, state, federal, and local funding, and, uh, private funding as well, and that's how we are able to maintain our, our programs to continue on. So, um, again, I just wanted to thank, uh, Mayor Melissa Zamora, excuse me, Commissioner, Mr. Melissa Zamora, for giving us this opportunity. And just let you all know that we are located now at, uh, the new building, which is, uh, Lakeview Medical Plaza, right next to, or in the area of Dr. Roco's office. Um, and we're there, we're even, uh, trying to spread the word out as much as we can so law enforcement and other individuals who, uh, come by will know that this is where they can refer people. Obviously only 8 to 5, Monday through Friday, but our center is open 24/7 all year long. Uh, we have a shelter that's holds seven bedrooms, and we were recently able to add another bedroom, uh, due to some funding that we got from the state not too long ago, and we added another bedroom. So that, that gives us the opportunity to hold at least, uh, roughly, maybe 30, 40 individuals at one time. And this is the time of the year when we're the busiest. Unfortunately, there's a lot of abuse going on in, basically all over the place, but we're concerned about our community, as this is our community of Brownsville, and we're here to serve those individuals when, when in need. And there's not a need for them to get counseling, uh, excuse me, a shelter, then there is, there is the counseling and other outreach services, which Claudia here is going to just, wanted to let you know a little bit about some of the, the programs that she works with out in the schools at BISD. We started recently, I think last year, Claudia? A, uh, preventive, uh, prevention program as a pilot project with the school, uh, Oliveta Middle School, where we had experienced and received a number of, uh, calls of concerns by counselors and teachers, and the principal there, where there was a lot of, uh, activity going on, where there's a lot of abuse among the middle-aged students, which is very, a very big concern, and should be for, a concern for us all if, if we're not in the education field. But it is a concern, because these kids are already experiencing the violence at a very young age, and getting up to before they're even in high school already have been, um, sexually harassed, sexually abused, raped, and so forth, and some, some of these cases may be cases that may not go necessarily be reported to law enforcement, but are coming straight to the school district, or rather, straight to us from the school district from time to time. So this is a, this is the reason why we have Claudia and other individuals, such as Claudia, at our center. Uh, and Claudia's very experienced, she's been with our agency now on seven, eight years, Claudia?
Nine years.
At least nine years, uh, with us, and she's been there, uh, nine years, I've been there 10. Uh, so she's got the experience of, uh, working with these kids and educating them in the school system, and working with the counselors, working closely with those teachers and the principals that will allow us to come in and offer the prevention, uh, opportunities to the students. Um, again, um, we just have a little pen and a brochure that has basic information about us, but where we can be reached, and we'd appreciate it if you can keep us in mind so that whenever we have, you have, uh, someone that might, you might need to refer to, by all means, send them to us, and, uh, we appreciate your time, your support, also. Mr. Kavler, thank you also for signing those, uh, uh, grant applications when it's time to come around. I probably have to visit with you again soon, as we end this year and start a new year, a new fiscal year. So thank you for that support as well, sir. Uh, there's many other individuals in here, I think I saw Chief Garcia in here somewhere. So Chief, thank you as well, he's been very supportive throughout the years, and we really appreciate that. And without, uh, the whole community's helping to support us in one aspect or another, that's how we're able to maintain and keep our programs going. So again, thank you all very much for your time, and, uh, we appreciate your, uh, your future support.
Thank you.
Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau's presentation and report?
Thank you, uh, good afternoon, Mayor and City Commissioners. First of all, happy holidays to you and the general public. My name is Mariano Bean Ayala, President and CEO of the Brownsville Convention and Visitors Bureau, your Convention and Visitors Bureau. I'm here to give you a first quarter, uh, report, and we, I want to, uh, title this here and there, because people wonder, "What do you do today, or what are you doing here in Brownsville? Or what do you do out there?" So, our Board of Directors are, I have Mr. Danny Loff, our new chairman, who is present here, uh, Joe Kenny's Vice President, Mr. PK Patel's Treasurer, Ms. Maricela Cortez's Secretary. Board members, Rosie Galasa, Russ Bishaw, and Danielle Tejerina. Uh, we're going to have, uh, elections of new board members this coming Thursday, and hopefully a new city, uh, commissioner, a city commissioner will be appointed as liaison on behalf of the city to our board. So I'm going to skip the mission statement, uh, generally they're basically the same, but economic impact, uh, something that I think you do need to know. I'm going to give you a report of walk-in visitors, as of right now, we have 976 walk-ins to the Bureau, uh, an average of 2.79 people, and, uh, they, uh, average spend, uh, by the party is $371. Uh, usually it's per day, 133 per person. Average length of stay is normally 3.4 days. Uh, total is 452, which would give us an eco, uh, in, economic impact of $431,000. The formula is provided by the Economic Impact Travel of Texas Office of the Governor, Texas Economic Development and Tourism, that's the formula we use. And something the Commissioners somewhat is well aware of, being in, in the field. Strategic approach, well, it's very, uh, normal, I'm going to go ahead and skip that for sake of time. But, uh, one of the things we tend to, uh, hopefully have are famili, familiarization tours, or FAM tours. In October, we had, uh, Audio Mexico provided, uh, brought in some reporters from Monterrey, and, uh, they wrote some articles in the Mexican newspaper about the fantastic things that are happening here in Brownsville, and the fact that they're, they're coming directly into Brownsville. And, uh, also in October, we had, uh, TTIA, AAA, and TxDOT tour the city. Uh, TTIA stands for Texas Travel Industry Association, and, uh, you, uh, AAA is American Automotive Association, and TxDOT is Texas Department of Transportation. We had 22 representatives from all over the state that, uh, the majority are from, uh, travel centers, like the one in Harlingen, right in front of the, the mall. They came by, uh, and, um, we took care of them Wednesday evening, and took care of them, uh, Friday morning, and, uh, showed them, uh, the zoo, the Children's Museum, uh, Brownsville Fine Arts Museum, the historical, uh, Brownsville Historic, Brownsville Museum, and, uh, Historical Association of Stillman- travel center. They took a lot of OVGs, Official Visitors Guide, so we're very excited about them coming to Brownsville. The last thing on that page was the Houston Astro, I was approached by a marketing person, Nikki Patrialka, and we're gonna have the Houston Astro Caravan coming to Brownsville January eighteenth, twenty-twelve. And once again, this is to promote Brownsville to the Houston Astro Organization. And I'd like to thank the cooperation we've got from the city of Brownsville, especially the City Manager, Mr. Kavler. We're gonna have it at the Brownsville Event Center. I want to thank the Brownsville Independent School District, they're gonna have a, a program at Lucio Middle School. And I want to thank Cobbleheads because they're gonna provide supper for these people. So now we're focusing on sports. Why sports? We, we were, with the sports park and the Brownsville Parks and Recreation, we were able to win a bid on the Texas Athletic Association Federation State Flag Football Championship, which was held December third and fourth. Brought in a, and we're, we're playing it safe here, three hundred and ninety-three thousand dollars was brought in by nineteen teams that stayed around the Brownsville area. And then we also had a fast pitch tournament, brought in thirty-four thousand dollars. We're looking in North Brownsville Little Mix Stick Tournament July fourth and eighth. And once again, the Parks Recreation, the Sports Park and ourselves, we cooperated, we went to the teams conference and were able to win a bid for the USSA World Hispanic Softball Tournament. We're looking at a minimum of seventy softball teams, hopefully up to a hundred, hundred and twenty. The last thing on that page was, if you see, USSA tournaments for twenty-twelve, I'm trying to win three more, two to four more tournaments. This will be confirmed at the Regional U.S. Conference in Dallas Super Bowl weekend. Last year I went to, to the conference they had and came back with two tournaments. Mr. Tuffy Martinez and I attended the one last year and hopefully this year we'll come back with four tournaments. Meetings and conventions, this year we had between September twenty-ninth and October first, ASSIST had their conference, state conference here in Brownsville, they're called the Associated Security Services and Investigator of Texas, and that brought in seventy-nine thousand dollars. So between the sports and the ASSIST, we brought in the first quarter around five hundred thousand dollars and our budget at the Bureau is five hundred and twenty-five thousand, so I think we started the year pretty good. And this is possible because we get a lot of cooperation between a lot of entities in the city, especially the city of Brownsville and the Brownsville Sports Park. Now they're there, a lot of people have asked me, why, why, why don't we see you around here? Well, because we're trying to get people to come into Brownsville, so we do a lot of advertising out there throughout the state. We advertise in the Texas Monthly, the Midwest Texas, Texas Highway, and Group Travel Leader and billboards. And now we're, social media, something that was brought up by a Commissioner once, we do have Facebook now and we have online advertising. These are some of the magazines. Here's some of our new ads that we did in-house. Miguel Colasir is our new Communications Director and he, he's the one that came up with these new ads and we're promoting in Mexico with our Friends in Mexico. Este, una, una te, descubre Brownsville donde usted puede comprar, visitar, disfrutar, conocer nuestra historia. And then we also want to continue advertising in sports magazine, run, jump, slide, play in Brownsville. So these are things that we use, some of our old advertisement billboard, excuse me, some of the billboard ads. This Group Travel Leader, we, we were lucky enough to get a call, we went ahead, were quoted, Miguel was quoted, gave a little bit of history on the Char Days. We got this picture of the dancers and the gentleman on the upper, well, the dancers and this is a, twenty-five thousand people subscribe to this magazine and this was at no cost to Brownsville. And I keep saying Char Days and what have you and I'll tell you why I'm wearing my, my Hava. But now, here, what are we doing here? We had a marketing committee with citizens throughout Brownsville, a lot of key players, and one of the things they kept saying, hey, we need to start doing stuff here in Brownsville, letting people here in Brownsville know what we're doing. So we, we, we took that and ran with it, so now we have a poster says, Looking for Something to Do poster, and we'll show you a picture in a minute. Well, go back, please. And then we have the website, I'm very proud of our website. We're gonna ask everyone to start going to our website because our website is for every public entity in Brownsville and we're asking them to send us all their upcoming events and we'll post it on our webpage. So that's why we're saying, you know, Brownsville Information Center, we want everybody in Brownsville to go to our webpage to find out what's happening in Brownsville, looking for something to do. We also now have a telephone app that we can go to your mobile phone, which is now what a lot of people are doing, and you can go to our webpage with your mobile, mobile phone. And we're promoting our festivals and our local events. There's a picture of the webpage, I'm very excited about it, it, there's, it's, and this is our Facebook page. And Miguel, would you like just to tell them what the Facebook's about?
Yeah, well, the idea of Facebook is to start getting more connected with people in, in the community and outside of the community as well. And we've started, you know, posting a lot of the events on Facebook as well, so a lot of the organizations around will send us events and we'll get it up there. We also started a Facebook ad to increase, you know, likes on our page, which is important to keep developing those connections. And so the Facebook, you know, we started it back in September and now we're up to about a hundred and twelve likes and they keep growing exponentially each day, so, you know, it's, it's taken off, so.
This is our Looking for Something to Do in Brownsville poster. If you notice, we, we have the museums, festivals, sports, nature, outdoors, and if you notice we have the QR code, so people can also go to QR code. At the bottom we have the Twitter and the Facebook ads. And this poster, we're gonna just fine tune it a little bit more, but hopefully by next week we'll finish it. We brought twenty-nine of these, if anybody would like to take them, we'd be more than happy to leave them here with a secretary. And then there's our webpage, I'm very proud of it. This banner keeps switching, the world-class zoo, we have different banners up there. If you look below the word zoo, it's not a gorilla, it's me actually there doing something with the city of Brownsville. We call it Welcome Brownsville. A great idea that the, the people at Channel Twelve came up with. We, we now have a feature that we explain what the zoo's about, the Children's Museum, we did one for the Holiday Village, and I have had a lot of people tell me, you know what, that is a great idea because I didn't know the hours of this place, I didn't know we could do this and whatever. So my hat's off to the people at the library that came up with this idea, it's working. And if you notice, we have Holiday Village, Dolly and what have you. So we're promoting as many things that's going on here in Brownsville. So this is your webpage, please go to it and I want all, everyone in Brownsville to know that it's working. These are hits and what have you, you all could read about that later, so keep going. And where are we going, where are we headed? In January, I'm proud to say that we're gonna have a Texas Monthly advertorial. It's, we're looking forward to it, we're gonna have about four pictures, we have, we already have a nice little write-up, so people will, that get Texas Monthly and buy Texas Monthly are gonna have a whole page about Brownsville. The other thing, be a tourist at home. We're gonna start emphasizing to everyone in Brownsville, you know what? Go and check out our museums, go and see what we have here in your house, in your backyard. That way you can start promoting what you've seen to other people, your family members in the Houston areas, Austin and what have you. So we're gonna start coming up with an idea of be a tourist at home, we're gonna come up with a card where they go to certain places in Brownsville, they get it stamped and when they complete the card, they come back to the Bureau and we're gonna give them a gift. The other thing, we're gonna come up with a Brownsville Herald Weekly Factoids, we're gonna ask you to, we're gonna put out, when was the first Char Days baseball tournament held in Brownsville? When did the Children's Museum open? Or did you know that Amelia Anhardt was in Brownsville, et cetera? You know, things that, that people can learn about and of course we're gonna be promoting local events. This is something I want to thank the, once again, once again, the city of Brownsville, the Department of Transportation, Mr. Esparza I believe is his name? Robert Esparza? I'm telling you, people in Brownsville are working together. I gave him a call, I says, you know, Robert, people are asking, where's the Information Center? Because I had the Brownsville with a history as big as Texas logo up there and people would drive by and they wouldn't find it. On the highway, this is what the highway, a TxDOT has, so I asked Robert, Robert, could you help me out? You know, he came down, brought in one of his fellow workers, they, they asked me what they wanted. Within two weeks, we had this. Then Santana Torres and his people at Public Works, they come by, they fix the lights and if you notice it's, the light you can see it's shining, they put lights in front of the building, now you can actually see our building in the evening, and there's still more work to do. But I'm telling you, the people of Brownsville, the department, the city of Brownsville are coming together, helping us put the Brownsville Information Center out there where everyone can see it and know where it's located. And I want to thank each and one of those. Where are we headed? This is what we're gonna put in the Texas Monthly, Viva Fiesta. That's why I'm wearing my Hava. I want everybody to know that Brownsville is a city of fiesta where we're happy people. I have so many people coming to Brownsville, man, all of you are so friendly, I can't get over it. Everywhere I go, I'm greeted with a smile, a handshake, a pat on the back, an abrazo, I mean, we're, we're, they're used to shaking hands at a distance and here in Brownsville we say, hey, how you doing? And, and you know what? Wow. Wow. And why not put that out there? Our world famous zoo, Char Days, our Air Fiesta, our Latin Jazz, our et cetera, on and on. So this is the, this is the ad we're gonna put in the Texas Monthly and we're proud of it. We're excited and we want everyone in Brownsville to be happy and proud of what we're doing for you because we want you to promote us. This is what we had, Brownsville on the Border by a Sea will always use, always. We had Brownsville lay a fiesta every day, we've had friendly, historical, affordable Brownsville with a history as big as Texas, we promote Brownsville Sports Park. Why? Because we market Brownsville, these are the things out there. We're not gonna use them all anymore, but this is what's been out there. We're gonna start focusing on Brownsville on the Border by the Sea and a Fiesta, Brownsville Fiesta. And this is what we're gonna end it with.
Is the last one?
Oh, the last one, the, didn't come up. Okay. This is the future. Fiesta, always a Fiesta, we're always happy, there's always something to do. October, we have the Latin Jazz, we have Zafari, Char Days, we have Air Fiesta, we have the Holiday Village, we have sports tournaments all the time, we have swim meets, we have soccer tournaments. What isn't there to do in Brownsville? We've got it, we're always excited. That's where we're going. So with that, I'm opening up for questions.
Wow.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Fantastic, I'll use a different word. How do we get the app? How do people get the app?
You can get the app, it's actually a mobile web app, so you'll have to use your iPhone or, it works on iPhone or Android. You'll go to your brownsville.org and it'll, you'll be directed to the app and you can just save it to your home screen or to your bookmarket and, and you'll be able to browse local events and listings for hotels and local listings as well.
Okay, and how do we, how do we or other people give you information about events to be posted on the website and such?
Well, you can send them to, to me at mcollis.org or eventually, actually, what we're gonna do, I'm working on, so that people can submit these events online, so they'd be able to go to our website and have those events posted. But they'd go through a filtering, you know, to make sure that they're legitimate events and then they'll come over and be available on the app and on the website as well.
Which website?
www.brownsville.org.
Any other questions?
Nice work, nice work.
Thank you and, and thank you for all your help, especially the citizens of Brownsville and the city of Brownsville, thank you.
Thank you.
You know, for some reason I think it's appropriate, at this time, I would like to give each Commissioner, invite each Commissioner for a couple of minutes to wish the city of Brownsville, all its people, a happy holiday season. So we'll start with you, Commissioner Rose.
Would like, on behalf of myself and my family, like to invite, wish the community and all of your families a very Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. We do live in a beautiful part of the world and go outside and enjoy it and, and celebrate the season.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to wish everybody also Merry Christmas. Y de parte de mi familia, desearles una feliz navidad y recordarles a toda la gente que, recordar que la navidad es el nacimiento de nuestro señor Jesucristo y no perderse en lo materialístico. So please, don't lose yourself in all the materialistic hoopla that goes on, remember that the reason for the season is the birth of our Savior Jesus Christ. So Merry Christmas to everybody, feliz navidad, thank you.
John?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to also wish everyone a very happy holiday season, a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. It's, it's been a pleasure working with, with these folks up here, with all the wonderful employees at our city that I, I got to see at our banquet and, and most importantly, serving you all, the public. So I wish you and your, your family a very Merry Christmas, thank you.
Melissa?
I'd like to echo everyone's sentiments, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone, but I'm going to use my time to solicit monetary donations, cupcakes, and candy for the Cameron County Child Welfare Board. I assist them every year with donations for a Christmas party for more than seven hundred and eighty foster children in Cameron County. So if you're willing to donate even a dozen cupcakes, a bag of candy, or even twenty bucks, please contact me. My number is four five five seven zero four four or email me, my information is on the city of Brownsville website, thank you.
Jessica, what we were doing is we're giving all the Commissioners the ability to address the public and wish them a happy holiday season, so you're next.
Wow, I just walked in.
I like your work.
Thank you. Well, first of all, it's been a very hard year for a lot of us. It's been a big year of transition and I want to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas. We had elections this year, we had a lot, we came into our office here and it's an honor, an absolute honor to serve for you because as a citizen sitting on the other side, I saw so many things that I didn't like or that I wanted to correct. And any of you, stand up and have a voice and, and do what you feel is right. And that's kind of what I did all year this year, but more than anything, if anybody has a concern in District Two or anything with the city of Brownsville, I open you with welcome arms. Please, please, please come and find me, I am here for you, I'm an advocate for you. And I can be reached on my cellphone, it's private, I'm about to give it out, thank you, Tony. It's not a city cell, but I can be reached at four five nine four 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 four, very easy. Everybody remember it, write it down, put it on your refrigerator if you need something, it's four five nine four 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 four. And my email is jtetrea, it's kind of hard to spell, but J-T-E-T-R-E-A-U at C-O-B dot U-S. And of course, my Facebook, yeah. But if anybody needs anything, I am here for you, we're gonna bring in the new year. I love the city of Brownsville, I love everything it brings, we are a city that is unlike any other and we need to stick together and focus on getting the work done and forget about all of the pettiness and whatnot, we need to work together to be a strong city. And that's the message that I want to relay to you for the new year and I want to wish every single one of you a happy holidays, Merry Christmas, whatever you celebrate, we're with you and we love you, thank you.
Thank you, Estella.
I just wanted to take the time to say Merry Christmas to everybody and, and reiterate the fact, not to forget the importance of family. I think in today's times and days, we forget to take the time to enjoy primarily our children and our, our significant others, so just make sure you take that time right now during the holidays when we, things slow down and we have a little bit more time for ourselves to enjoy the company of our family and focus on what's important, truly important. So have a happy holiday, safe holiday season and a Happy New Year.
Thank you. Estella, I think we'll go ahead and go to the next, I think the rest of our consent items.
Consent agenda items, A through J.
May I approve?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Item five, public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number twenty-eleven Public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 2011-1551 to authorize the city manager to abandon and close a portion of a 60-foot right-of-way described as Avenida de Oro, adjacent to Lot 27, Block D of El Pedregal subdivision.
Good evening. My name is Eduardo San Diego with Engineering Department. This portion of right-of-way is not in use. We have some utilities, but we, we're retaining some utility statements. Our department recommends approval to abandon it.
To close public hearing? Any second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Move to approve? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. It is approved.
Item six. Public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 2011-1552 to authorize the city manager to abandon and close a portion of a 20-foot alley located between lots 11, 12, 13, and 14 of Block 171 of the original townsite of Almito.
This is located at the, close to the intersection of FM 1732 and the expressway 77. We're also keeping some utility statements. Our department recommends approval.
Hear a motion as public hearings, anybody? Hear a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close public hearing? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is closed.
Move to approve? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Item seven. Public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2011-040 to rezone from dwelling A to general retail G for tract 1, 7, 2, or lot A of Block Double D, Brownsville Land and Improvement Company subdivision, located near Los Ebonos Boulevard and Coria Street.
Honorable mayors and city commissioners, in this particular case, the applicant wants to rezone to fourth commercial G, right in the corner of Coria and Los Ebonos Boulevard. The planning and zoning commission voted to recommend this for your approval. This is a public hearing.
Any comments? Hear motion to close public hearing?
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Entertained a motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item eight. Public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2011-041-S to allow a duplex on a dwelling A cert classification for lot 35 of Stewart subdivision, located at 1255 Chilton Street.
Honorable mayors and city commissioners, the planning and zoning commission voted to approve a duplex at this location shaded in red. This is a public hearing.
Any comment? Entertained a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Public hearing closed. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item nine. Public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2011-604-CU, an ordinance to allow a conditional use permit to sell on-premises alcohol at 1.3 acres of lot 1 of Freeport Park subdivision, located at 7115 Padre Allen Highway, Suite B.
Honorable mayors and city commissioners, this is a, a wet restaurant, restaurant that wants to sell beer and wine. This was discussed at the last meeting. There was some confusion with the vote, so we're bringing it back for reconsideration. The planning and zoning commission had previously voted to approve this applicant, to recommend approval of this application, so it's here for you for your consideration again.
What was the, your confusion on the board, on the vote?
It was on the voting, I believe.
What was your confusion?
The last, the, the one after, which should have been the first one, and they voted on diff, on the two different ones?
No, I believe, no, this was the one where I believe we did not get the votes.
Oh, we didn't have the votes correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So we're bringing it again for discussion. So it's a public hearing, it's a restaurant, you may want to put the site plan, but it's a restaurant and, and it's, it's a suite, so there's surrounding buildings of, of industrial and commercial establishments. The reason why it's here is that it's, the property line is within 200 feet of a residential area. So they're asking for the conditional special use permit to sell beer and wine in this restaurant.
Robert?
Robert, last, last time we, I think you weren't against it, or maybe you held it back, but the discussion was that the residential area was in proximity of this thing, okay? That's what the whole issue was last time. And it's the same thing brought up. I think it's called the Crystal Palace?
Used to be. Used to be the Crystal Palace, now it's a restaurant.
It's a restaurant. And they divided, and you did vote it, but it seems like it, something happened here. They brought it back for the same thing. The question is, I do have friends that lived in that neighborhood, and, and I did ask Ben last time if there were other places that sold beer, they said across the street at the restaurant that's right there. But the issue here is the residential area. That's the key issue here. If they're gonna sell on-premises, I know you can't bring out the liquor and stuff like that, but it's very close to residential, and I'd like you all to think yourself, only 200 feet, 200 feet. Would you like to have a place that's selling beer and you get drunk? So please consider that. Thank you.
Commissioners, somewhat, didn't we discuss this one?
We did, we voted against it.
I think the issue was that the voting wasn't recorded correctly. We did vote on it, but...
Okay. Well, I'll tell, I'll tell you what, the first thing we'll do is, is there any, is there anybody else who has a comment for public hearing? Yes, sir. Please come to the microphone.
My name is Serardo Reyes, and I'm processing the Texas Alcoholic Beverage Commission license, and this particular place happens to be a restaurant, not a bar and, not a bar joint. And they're gonna sell seafood right across the street from, I think it's Chops, Chops or?
Chopsticks.
Chopsticks. And they have a, they have a mixed beverage permit, which is alcohol and all that. In this particular case, it's just wine and beer, so just consider that. And it's a restaurant. It's not a joint. It's not a bar.
Yeah. But Ben, now, the Chopsticks is, is, did not require a variance, if I recall correct, or did it?
Chopsticks did require a variance, but it was long ago, Mayor, when, when they came to be.
Okay, 'cause that's, that's across the street, and it's, but it's gotta be at least 300 feet from any residential area, is that right?
From the rear, it could be, yes, a little bit more than that.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
Right across the street, I believe, like diagonal, there's a liquor store.
That's what I was...
There's a liquor store.
Yes, there's a liquor...
And there's other restaurants that have the same or similar permit to sell alcoholic beverages.
Okay.
So they're not that far.
No, and there's a liquor, there is a liquor store right across, and behind them, there's a residence, there's a park, Trader Park, you know. So, and it is a restaurant, and I think the owner wants to limit three beers, you know, he's never, he has Golden Coastal Number One over here by Boca Chica and Old Port Isabel Road, and, you know, there's no problems there.
And that building had gone through several businesses, and they've shut down, and he did a very good job in the remodeling of the building.
It's a family-oriented restaurant. That's what it is.
Okay, thank you very much.
Would be an asset to the...
Yes.
Okay, anybody else would like to comment on public hearing? I would entertain a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve is on the floor. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, so it's one, one, two, three, four, four, and two nays. Commissioner Longoria and Commissioner somewhat against. Motion carries.
Public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2011-605-CU, an ordinance allowing a conditional use permit on, to sell on-premises alcohol in lot 1, Block 1 of Cherry Estates, located at 2353 Old Port Isabel Road.
Honorable mayors and city commissioners, this is the area shaded in red, right in the intersection of Ruben Torres and Old Port Isabel Road. This is again a restaurant, and they want to sell beer and wine with their food. The planning and zoning commission voted to recommend this application to you, so this is a public hearing.
Is it, are you, is this a variance of any kind? Or is this...
No, it's a special conditional use permit. It's a, it's, it's a special permit for them to sell beer and wine. The reason why they come before the commission is because their residential is within 200 feet.
That's what I'm saying. Same, same situation.
Same situation. It's a different location.
Same situation as the other.
Same situation.
Okay. Any, any public comments? Commissioners, anybody? I'm not, I'm not familiar with that site.
Is that the one that's by Dana Road?
Yeah, Dana Road, it's, it's further to the west. This is a green complex, it's sort of...
Stripes, stripes.
Yeah, there's the stripes and...
It's a, it's a little complex, it's green, it's different, kind of unusual architecture.
It's located there.
Okay, I think there's some other gentleman, go ahead, please, sir.
Good evening. My name's Jorge Castorena. We've been there, it's in the corner on Old Port Isabel and 802 Ruben M. Torres. Okay, we've been there for several years now, and you recall, there's a stripe right next to us, there's a fountain in the corner. You've seen our construction, we've been there under construction for about a year. Okay, it's a, once again, it is a restaurant, a very family-oriented restaurant. We want to bring something different to, to the city of Brownsville. Okay, we have a real nice facility. We've been in construction, like I said, for over a year, planning, distributing, you know, our restaurant the way which would be accessible to families and childrens and things like that. We are asking for this conditional permits for beer and wine. You, the building used to be green, we just changed the color to, I think it's beige or something like that. So we are across from Stripes. Now, we do have some, some, some residential areas that are in back of us. I think there's like a sewer line or like a small, I don't know what you call it, drainage?
It's a drainage.
Canal, a canal that separates, separates us from the residential areas, and I think some of those parts are, are not even, there's no people living there. I mean, there's, there's abandoned houses, things like that.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Any other comments?
How far is this from the, that new restaurant that opened where the World Gym used to be?
Not so far away. It's probably a quarter mile, half mile.
Yeah, that's further, all the, all those properties are further to the west.
The Contra.
It's the Contra?
No, this is...
No, 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 but I'm asking how far it is, and does the Contra have...
They have a bar.
A wet bar also.
It's across the street from this place.
Yeah, okay, now I know which one it is.
The green.
Okay, any other comments by anyone?
Yeah, this is the, the complex here, and, and their restaurants in, inside this complex, so...
I think it's a good idea.
Okay, I, do I hear a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any motion to approve?
So move? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Nay.
Commissioner Melissa?
Please note my name, please, thank you.
Opposed. Thank you.
One nay?
Yes.
Item 11. Public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 235-2011-606-CU, an ordinance allowing a conditional use permit to sell on-premises alcohol for lot 3, Block 1 of Mystic Meadows subdivision, located at 1905 Central Boulevard.
Honorable mayors and city commissioners, this is a new established, this is a new Wingstop restaurant, located, there, the area shaded in red. Again, this is a, a conditional use permit to sell a beer with, with their food. This is a public hearing.
City commissioners, if you have not seen this place, I think it's next to Papa John's?
Oh, no.
The next one? Okay. Yeah, it's a nice, it's very nice, and I can disagree with this place, 'cause it does look very nice. It is very nice. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. I guess that's an endorsement.
Never before seen it.
Any, any, any other comments, public comments?
Yeah, he just, he conflicts me because one minute he's against conditional use permits and the next minute he's approving. So, I don't know, I don't get you guys.
You need to go visit the other one, Mr....
Okay. Can I entertain a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any motion to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Robert.
Item 12. Public hearing in action on first reading of ordinance number 231, 235-2011-904, to rezone from dwelling Z and general retail V to dwelling G for lot 1 through 15 of Block 128 of Almito original townsite, located near FM 803 and Coach Street.
Honorable mayors and city commissioners, this area is, the property being downzoned, shaded in red. This is in the city-initiated downzoning, basically to facilitate the owners of those lots to facilitate them to get a, a building permit in a, in a very economical and faster fashion. Right now, there's confusion on the, on the side yards, the front yards, because of the industrial and, and the high density zoning, so this was kind of facilitate that permitting process for them. We have many applicants coming in and getting a building permit, and there's confusion as to what the side yards and front yards should be, so this, I'm just trying to fix the zoning map to, it's a dwelling G, and everybody will know what their front yard would be. So I ask for your approval of this application.
Any other comments? Entertained a motion to close public hearing?
So move? Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Any motion to approve?
Move to approve?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
First person is Mr. Zeke Silva. First person is Mr. Zeke Silva.
Regarding appointment of a mayor pro tempore and a deputy mayor pro tempore.
Commissioner?
Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor, I was just, sorry about that.
I think we're gonna get you some Red Bull.
Yeah.
Just don't drive anywhere.
Sorry, sorry, guys.
Mayor, after the, usually after we get into office, the mayor right away appoints a mayor pro tem and a deputy mayor pro tem. In case we arise with a situation like we had at the beginning of December where you had to be out of town, which is understandable, but we need to continue with city business. And in that point, mayor pro tem or deputy mayor pro tem take over. And in case you're not able to be at a meeting or at a function that requires your presence, mayor pro tem, deputy mayor pro tem, or if not, a city commissioner is asked afterwards. So I ask that this be played on the agenda. We used to have, or we have, an ordinance in place that has a rotation of city commissioners. And my request to city secretary and to the city commission was that we return it to where a mayor will appoint a deputy mayor pro tem and mayor pro tem to a yearly function. And therefore, there can be continuity with those people following in line when the mayor is unavailable. That there be somebody that, we follow the chain of command or that follow right after the mayor, and mayor can work closely with him during that term.
Okay. And Commissioner, what happens is I asked, I tried to find out exactly what the city charter calls for. And it calls for neither the alternating nor the yearly thing. I tried to get ahold and I talked to Commissioner Gowin just briefly, and I think I called Commissioner Samota and some of the people who'd been here. It seems to me that the rotation aspect of it has worked well before. And I would recommend that we allow each one of the commissioners to maybe serve a couple of months for this next year. So that we do have, I totally agree with you. The thing is that it wasn't real a big priority in all the things that we were facing. But I truly believe that we need to have something. And so I'm gonna suggest to the commission that perhaps maybe a motion would be in order that we do the rotating every two months. And we'll do whatever the commission wishes with regards to how we start and how we go through. So that everybody gets a chance to function in that capacity.
Mayor, my main concern on putting this wasn't to try to pressure you to do it or to change any kind of ordinance. It's just when it comes to city business, it needs to get done. And in the fact that when you need to be out of the city, that there be somebody established where we can still continue with the meeting. And then it'd be reported back to you when you get back.
And I appreciate that. I think we shouldn't stop because I'm out of town. Like I said, I just haven't gone through all the steps. But I did want to make sure that we did not violate the city charter. But I think that we don't violate anything if we go on this alternating route. And so again, I, you know, it's up to the commission. But if there is a motion or, you know, whatever y'all wish to do, I would suggest that every one of you gets a chance to be in that capacity at one point or another for the next year. And then perhaps we'll take a look at it a year from now. How does that sound?
Well, we already have one existing right now, so there really wouldn't be any need for any action. Just an update on city secretary, where do we stand right now? And since it is a new commission...
We can show you the rotation schedule if you'd like to see it.
And I think we'd have to...
I was the mayor pro tem.
You didn't know it, but... What happens is that looks like it's going January to February. Three months. And then, again, it looks like it's going for six months with relation to the first mayor pro tem. Then it starts down to only July, August, September, three months. I think everybody needs to have an equal amount of time on both of those particular... Mayor pro tem and deputy mayor pro tem for a period of two or three months. If you do it for two months and everybody gets a shot, everybody will be mayor pro tem and deputy pro tem. And there will be six of you. And then all of you will be able to fulfill the capacity at one point or another, you know, for one year. And then let's take a look at it a year from now, so that we can see if that works successfully and we can continue it. So what is the pleasure of the commish?
Stella, why do I show on there's been mayor pro tem for six months?
That's what I'm saying. I don't understand how that works.
I wasn't, but...
Where was that on the...
Camarillo was mayor pro tem during April.
Oh, that should have been Camarillo and Gowin, right. That's probably just a typo. You weren't, you weren't... Yeah, no, that's incorrect.
No, because Camarillo at that time was deputy mayor pro tem, so right after that, he moved up to mayor pro tem.
Wasn't that the period when he had resigned?
I'm trying to help you. No, he never resigned.
Well, because of the election?
Yeah.
He was still on. Then it's a typo because it's, I'm not, nobody's supposed to have six.
Yeah, just ran on three, it ran on three months and then everybody moved.
Yeah, and the reason I say two months is because that way everybody gets a shot to do it at least two months. And that takes care of all six commissioners for a period of one year. And I think the only thing that you got, you know, should we, because we already have something like that in place, can we just trust Stella and company to go ahead and fill in those slots? And then everybody is advised as to when they're supposed to serve? Is that a fair way of doing it? Or how does, is that okay? Is everybody, Stella, we're trusting you, girl.
You want two months per person?
Two months for each one. And you can do it at your, in other words, as long as everybody gets two months as mayor pro tem and two months as deputy mayor pro tem. And perhaps maybe you can submit that to us sometime in the next...
We'll prepare a form for you.
Yeah, how it goes. And unless anybody has an objections, we'll...
Do I get a discounted Lola's?
You get a discounted Lola's. Anyway, and then we can formally, everybody is agreeable to it. If they have any objections by June third, I mean, January third, which is our next meeting.
Right.
We'll address it. Okay, so put it back on the agenda.
Two months. Put it back on the agenda.
Okay. Next item?
Item fifteen, consideration in action to acknowledge the deputy city manager, chief financial officer's financial statements and cash advancement report for the city of Brownsville for fiscal year ended September thirtieth, twenty-eleven.
The fiscal year that ended September thirtieth, twenty-eleven. These are all unofficial numbers. At the present, our auditors are reviewing our financials. They're going through our records. And sometime in March of next year, they'll, we should have another report. This is, I'll start off with a little bit of highlights regarding the twenty-eleven financial report. Oh, by the way, you do have a more detailed report that shows all the funds, as well all the revenues that are, that the city, all the operating funds that the city has. But this PowerPoint presentation just gives you highlights of the fiscal year twenty-eleven. We had a decrease in fund balance of a little over one point four million from the previous year. Sales tax increased a little over one point four, or about four point seven percent over twenty-ten. Bridge revenues decreased four point eight three percent. There was a transfer, a cash subsidy to the airport. An increase between twenty-ten and twenty-eleven of a hundred ninety-nine thousand two forty-four. There was a decline in hotel motel tax of thirteen point seven percent. The estimated fund balance in the general fund at the end of twenty-eleven was seven thousand, seven million eight eighty-two four twenty-three. This was the projected amount when, or what the budget showed. Even though the budget showed seven million eight eighty-two four twenty-three, we had a positive variance at the end of the year of five million seven ninety-one five thirty-four. Which in effect, we have an estimated unaudited fund balance at the end of twenty-eleven of thirteen million six seventy-three nine fifty-seven. Which is quite, a lot better than what was anticipated or what was in the budget. Medical insurance expenditures increased one point six million over prior year. But the fund balance only decreased eighty-three thousand one thirty-eight. The fund balance at the end of twenty-eleven for this particular fund was a little over three point eight million. We're hoping that expenditures in the coming year will decrease as we move forward. Workers' compensation, which is another plus for us because we see a decline in expenditures of a hundred ninety-eight thousand seven seventy-six, or seventeen point twenty-six percent from the previous year. Workers' compensation expenditures are based on payroll. So if the payroll increases, obviously the expenditure also increases. We experienced an increase in sales tax collections during twenty-eleven. This is after a two-year decline which began in twenty-oh-nine and twenty-ten. We probably won't reach the twenty-zero-eight sales tax receipts, which were the highest ever until possibly until twenty-thirteen, or maybe twenty-twelve. But I'm looking at morally twenty-thirteen. And this, what do we look for in the budget for coming year? Obviously, our economy is slowly rebounding. And again, we will continue to monitor our expenditures to make sure that we do not exceed the budget. This is the general fund balance sheet. And the main thing here is the fund balance at the end of each of twenty-eleven. And again, the fund balance is thirteen million six seventy-three nine fifty-seven. The, we look at the summary for the general fund. We had expenditures exceeding revenues of one point four million. And that's the reason why our fund balance declined to thirteen million six seventy-three nine fifty-seven. Sales tax, this is the twenty-twenty-eleven, we had a four point seven percent increase. How are we doing this year? We have two months for fiscal year twenty-twelve. Our sales tax is increasing at two point five percent. But we are below budget by point thirty-one percent. This is a chart of the sales tax. And you can see twenty-zero-eight was our best year. We are slowly rebounding. And again, we're hoping to hit that twenty, twenty-zero-eight in the near future. Bridge, the bridge fund, there are decreases in revenues as a result of the traffic at Los Tomates or Veterans Bridge. Our revenues went down sixty-one thousand one oh four. And this is a good summary of what has happened at our bridge that we owe jointly with Cameron County. You can see at twenty-zero-six, we had a very, very good year. Since then, there's been declines. The general fund, again, the budget at the end of twenty-eleven showed a seven million eight eighty-two four twenty-two, which we exceeded. This is a little more breakdown as to some of the revenue categories that are in the general fund. And there's the final amended budget with actual numbers on the second column. And then there's the variance on the last column between the budget and the actual amounts. And you can see on the revenues, we had a positive variance of two million seven eighty-two seven forty-seven. The, one of the major ones there that we saw an increase is fees and services, property taxes. And we also had a larger increase than what we anticipated from the P U B. On the expense side, we see, again, same description. You have the final budget versus the actual amount. And we actually spent four million one seventy-seven six ninety-four less than what was in the budget. And as we move forward, down there, you'll see that the, again, the fund balance, we run all those numbers, you'll see the fund balance, budget of seven million eighty-two four twenty-three. The actual amount was sixteen, thirteen million six seventy-three nine fifty-seven. This is another breakdown of some of the expenses and this, revenues and expenses. And this compares fiscal year twenty-ten with twenty-eleven and by categories in revenues and expenditures. And again, if you look at the very bottom, you'll see that there was a decrease in fund balance of one million four hundred and five five seventeen. This schedule shows the revenues and expenditures. And it shows you the highest revenues that the general fund has. And that's being the sales tax, which is twenty-five, almost twenty-six percent of total revenues in the general fund, followed by property taxes of twenty-two point two percent. Expenditures, the main one of expenditures is public safety at five fifty-eight percent. One of the things that the rating agencies, when we meet with them, they always look at what our reserves are. You recall, a few weeks ago, a few months ago, we passed a, you passed a resolution that requires us to maintain at least a fifteen percent fund balance reserve. At the end of twenty-eleven, we had a fourteen point four percent reserve. This is just a pie chart of all the general fund revenues and cash transfers. Again, the main one there is sales tax of twenty-six percent, followed by property taxes of twenty-two percent. And this is another pie chart of the expenses, expenditures, again, public safety leading the way at fifty-eight percent. One of the areas that obviously we looked also is the fund balances. And we have maintained strong balances for several years. There is, has been a drop in the last two years, as you can see there, from between twenty-zero, nine, ten, and eleven. And again, twenty-eleven, anything that I discussed tonight on twenty-eleven is all unofficial or unaudited numbers. The, again, these are the percentages that we always want to maintain in order to have a strong fund balance. We certainly don't want to be less than fifteen percent, fourteen point six one, fourteen point four percent. It's still a good percentage, but obviously we want to be at the fifteen percent level. This, again, then we look at the, one of the areas that, one of the areas that the rating agencies favor us is that we're very conservative when we prepare our budget. We always end up with positive variances, not only in revenues, but we also end the year with positive variances in revenue, in the expense side. And you can see here that we had an estimated fund balance of seven point eight million. We wind it up with thirteen point six, thirteen point six million. One of the areas that we also look at is the franchise fees that two of our solid waste collection companies, the residential and the commercial. And we generate from those contracts of almost nine point nine million dollars. Building permits, we're seeing an increase as we move forward. Again, our economy is rebounding. This are some of the, a breakdown of the building permits between twenty-eleven and twenty-ten. We had a growth of seventeen four percent. As we move forward, the convention and tourism fund, there was a drop in hotel motel taxes, I said earlier... I said earlier, of 190,943. The, the fund balance in this fund at the end of 2011 increased 30,639. We had a fund balance of 233,458. And one of the reasons there is we had a transfer from the general fund, increase of 251,646 that you can see at the, at the top on the revenue section. Community development, this is all federal money. It's revenues coming in, expenditures going out. Non-bonded debt, this are the, any lease purchase that we have. We have a fund balance at the end of, of 20, 2011 of 11,000, 11,600 plus. Debt service, this is the interest and sinking fund that the, that the city must maintain in order for us to pay our, our debt. All the debt service requirements that are due twice a year, in February and, and in August. We had expenditures in, in debt service requirements of those amounts and we ended the year with 2,804,000 in, 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 in fund balances, in the interest and sinking fund. Landfill tipping fee, I'm going to go as fast as I can here because I know we're, we're pressed for time, but the main thing here is the fund balances. Landfill tipping fee increase fund, we had the, at the end of the year, close to $1 million, Airport, one of the areas that we want to point out there is the transfers from the general fund. We had an increase of 199,244. The transfer in 2011 was 2,893,340. Motor vehicle parking system fund, there was a decline in fund balance or in net assets. We had a change of 16,389. As you can see, revenues dropped, 47,802. Public transit, our, our transit system, we had a loss of 2,948,815. That's expected. All transit systems in the U.S. operate on a deficit. We are, we, we get 50 percent from the Federal Transportation Administration, so they contributed 1,474, and this is only for operations. We also had a grant from the state of 420,947, and then we have the local match from the general fund. Again, we have to match the, the local share with the monies that we do not get from the, from the feds. As we move forward on the golf course, there was a, an increase in revenues of 128,057 and a decrease in, in expenditures. The analysis on the medical insurance, we normally want to keep this fund separate from other funds. We could easily have this in the general fund, but we always want to have this separate just to make sure, to be certain how our, our claims are coming, our, our expenses, our revenues. We, we had a sharp drop between 20, 2010 and 2011 of 83,138. We're hoping obviously that this, that this fund will, will certainly increase as we move forward. Then later on, this, this are all of A R grants, and I'm going to go very rapidly. We have several of them with 115, we have fund 150, 151, 152. All of these A R grants are required that we must have separate funds for them. So that's what we've been doing, 154, 155, 156, 157, 158, 159. Then finally, we have the investments between 2010 and 2011. We, we had total in the investment pool of 57,456,310. We also invest for other, for our other entities such as the B C I C, the P I D, and the G B I C, and those are listed at the very bottom. Interest earnings for all the funds are listed here. If there's a comparison between 2010 and 2011, obviously there, there is a drop and that's because our, our interest rates for investments are, are very, very low. And that concludes my presentation. If there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
Move to acknowledge?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Item 16, consideration in action to adopt ordinance number 2011-1550 to authorize the issuance of up to $25 million in principal amount of City of Brownsville, Texas general obligation refunding bonds. Series 2011, 2011 A, authorizing the execution of an escrow agreement, a paying, paying agent and registrar agreement, a purchase contract, and other instruments and procedures related thereto, delegating authority to certain city officials to select outstanding obligations to be refunded, and approve all final terms of the bonds, approving an official statement, and calling certain obligations for redemption.
Honorable mayor, members of the city commission, sometime in September, we came to you to get authorization to refund some bonds because of the interest rates that we could possibly get quite a bit of savings. We started off real good in September, then the, the rates didn't, didn't fare well as we move along, but now we see a, a major change. So what we're doing here, we're restructuring some of our debt and as, to, in order for us to generate some savings, based on the latest, if we can refund these bonds, hopefully as soon as possible, maybe by tomorrow, we're going to be generating quite a bit of savings because, and I'll, the handout that we just given to you, if you look in page three of, of this handout, you'll see some of the refund, a series that, bonds that we're refunding, which are 18,215,000. And on page four, page four in particular, and this particular, you cannot see very well, by the way, the what's, that's up here on, on the screen. If you look at 2017, the, the requirements jumped quite a bit, over 1.1.3 million. So if we look into the future, we'll see that between 2016 and 2017, our debt service payments were going to increase about 1.3 million. What this refunding is doing is that, because we are refunding some of these bonds, we are generating a, a savings of 6.45 percent in savings. We are refunding our, our average bond that we're, that, that we're refunding is at, it's at four, right now, 4.54 percent are the, are the bonds that we're refunding. We're going to refund them at a rate of six, 2.6. As, as we do this, we're generating a savings of 1,355,925, that's on page four. So when we go to 27, and I'm looking at, at page four, if we go to 2017, we'll be able to use those savings of 937,720 to ease the blow that's coming in, in 2017, so we won't have that much of a large payment that will be due in 2017. So this, this particular refunding that we're asking you to approve tonight is a major savings for us. We haven't seen such a savings in quite a long time, especially when we're, we're going to be saving quite a bit of money at, at a very low interest rate of 2.64 percent. We've had meetings with our three rating agencies. Obviously, when we go, when, this was all done by conference calls. We're always kind of concerned because of the economy. We, we met with them, we talked to them on the phone. All three of them kept our rating at the same, meaning that for Moody's, we had a double A three. For Standard &amp; Poor's, we kept the rating at A plus. And Fitch ratings kept us at the same rating as before, a double A minus. So we were very pleased with those ratings and obviously, this, good ratings actually equal savings in our, in our borrowing needs. We definitely recommend that you approve this tonight so that we can take care of this savings. If you have any questions, we have, happy to, if there's any legal question, we have a gentleman from McCall, Parkers, and Horton, or Noel Valdez, that will be able to answer any questions regarding this legal documents.
Move to adopt and approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Yes.
Item 17, consideration in action to authorize the acceptance and expenditure of the Texas Department of Public Safety, Department of Homeland Security, FEMA Grant Programs Directorate, a fiscal year 2011 Homeland Security Grant Program, State Homeland Security Program, awarded to the Brownsville Office of Emergency Management and Homeland Security in the amount of $47,724.41.
Honorable mayor and commissioners, my name is Odie Enliel. I'm the interim emergency manager administrator in your office of emergency management. The item before you is a request acceptance of the 2011 Homeland Security Grant. This is a federal grant that originates in DHS and FEMA. The City of Brownsville has been granted $30,000 under the Law Enforcement Terrorism Protection Activity Grant, which will be used for protective equipment for the Brownsville Police Department SWAT team. An additional $17,724.41 has been provided through the State Homeland Security Program grant for use by the Brownsville Fire Department Hazardous Materials Response Team in enhancement of their detection equipment. This is 100 percent grant, which requires no local match. Stafford can make acceptance of this grant.
No local match would accept.
Thank you very much.
Okay, do we, we have a motion in the second, right? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the motion carries and so, can you tell us where Jeff Johnson is?
Jeff had, him and his wife just had a baby on November the 28th.
So I, I want the whole world to know, what's that baby number what?
Baby number seven.
Seven.
Oh, my God.
See? And who says that the city's not growing?
Okay, I'm sorry, I just, I had, I had, I had to do that.
Go ahead to the next item.
Item 18, consideration in action on resolution number 2011-073 to adopt the Low Rio Grande Valley Regional Interoperability Communication Plan, standard operation procedures.
Honorable mayor and commissioners, as you're aware, since the terrorist attacks of 2001, various efforts have been undertaken at the federal, state, and local level to help ensure that emergency responders are well-equipped to protect our residents from either natural or man-made threats. One of the findings of the federal 9/11 commission was related to the need for emergency responders from various jurisdictions, from various departments within jurisdictions to be able to communicate clearly with one another using their standard issued radios. City staff has worked hard over the past decade to ensure that our public safety radio system allows police officers, firefighters, public health officials, and other responders to communicate with each other using existing radios. Staff has also worked to ensure that patching technology is in place to allow communication with other jurisdictions when needed. The item before you involves a region-wide implementation of the standardized programming template for public safety radios, as well as regional acceptance of the standard operating procedure for the training and use of public safety radios. Staff has reviewed these SOPs and these templates and is in agreement within their implementation. Approval of this item will help ensure that Brownsville radios are programmed in such a way as to ensure that quick interoperability with any valley fire, police, or public safety officer can be quickly accomplished. Staff recommends approval.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Send our regards to Jeff, okay?
Will do. Thank you. You have a good evening.
Item 19, consideration in action on resolution number 2011-072 to authorize a submittal of funding applications to request funding from the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation for Quality of Life Projects for fiscal year 2012.
Delina Barrera, I function as director of the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation. What you see before you is a resolution. What's required under the B C I C applications is that the governing board is made aware of applications being submitted by any type of agency. In this case, these are all the applications that are being submitted from the City of Brownsville to the, to the Brownsville Community Improvement Corporation for funding.
Move to approve.
I hear a second. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Delina.
Thank you.
Item 20, consideration in action to authorize the City of Brownsville to enter into a contract with Cameron County Emergency Service District Number One to furnish firefighting services to the unincorporated areas of Cameron County designed by zone number one, designated by zone number one on the official Fire Protection, Protection Service Zone Map of the C C E S D Number One.
Honorable mayor, commissioners, you have before you a contract by Emergency Service District offering $322,995 to the City of Brownsville to provide fire, fire service to the county area. We're here before you for your approval on this.
Move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, chief.
Item 21, consideration in action to authorize the City of Brownsville to enter into a contract with Cameron County Emergency Services District Number One to furnish ambulance and emergency medical services to the unincorporated areas of Cameron County designated by zone number one on the official Fire Protection Service Zone Map of the C C E S D Number One.
Honorable mayor, commissioners, this is also for providing ambulance service and the medical care to the citizens of the county area for $222,148.55. That's above the, the billing that we also send to Delina.
Your motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Item 22, consideration in action to approve leasing of real property located at 1254 East Monroe Street and to Real Bravo Wildlife Institute.
Honorable mayor, I ask to decide a table, please.
Table.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item 23, consideration in action to award a term contract for safety boots and safety shoes for the City of Brownsville.
Honorable mayor, city commissioners, it is intended of the City of, to contract with a qualified vendor to provide the City of Brownsville employees with safety boots and safety shoes. So the recommendation is to award a term contract for safety boots and safety shoes for the City of Brownsville, and this is going to the Bootjack of Brownsville, Texas at the stipulated prices in the tab sheet that is included on the agenda. This contract shall commence upon award by city commission and shall expire September 30th, 2012. And the city has, reserves a right and option to extend the life of a contract for two additional one year thereafter if it's mutually acceptable by the vendor and the City of Brownsville. Funding for these services will be derived from each user's department's operating funds.
Your motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries.
To award a contract for engineering and surveying services for capital improvement street and drainage improvement project for the City of Brownsville Engineering Department.
The recap for this project is that on January the 18th of this year, the purchasing and contracting services department presented a term contract on a rotation list for engineering and surveying services and miscellaneous projects for the engineering department. The update on November the 28th, 2011, the City of Brownsville receive, receive a proposal for engineering and surveying services to request design work of Jefferson Street and drainage improvements for the same street. As a resolution 2008-078, contracts greater than the threshold of 35,000 require approval by city commission. That's why I'm here to present this item. So the recommendation is to award a contract for engineering and surveying services for capital improvement streets and drainage improvements for the design work for Jefferson Street and drainage improvements to Ambutec Engineering of Brownsville, Texas in the amount of 59,500. Funding for this Jefferson Street will be derived from the 2011 G O Bond Fund Account The administration of the engineering department concurs with this recommendation. I'll be more than happy to address any questions.
I'm sorry, did this go out for bits?
It went for S Q's. On the recap on top, it says that on, on January the 18th, 2011, I presented an agenda item on a, to award a contract on a rotation list. It happens that now is, is a turn or, where is it? Ambutec is the next on the rotation list. So because, because of the resolution that was presented, resolution 2008-078, any items that are greater than 35,000 require city commission approval, and that's the only reason why. But to answer your But to answer your question, this procurement was presented at the beginning of the, of the year. We're not, we're not awarding a contract to, to AmbuTech for, to do the services, it's for the design for Jefferson Street. There's the next ones on, on the rotation list.
Can you explain the rotation list? I'm, I'm not sure that we understand that.
The rotation list, tell, would you, Robert, would you explain how it works? I, I think you have several firms on there, and they...
Yes. If, if you look on, if you look on the agenda, the next page, you will see that there's an analysis where it explains that there's one, two, three, four, five, six engineering and surveying, surveying firms on a rotation list. What I'm presenting tonight is an award to get the work to AmbuTech for Jefferson Street.
So next time, it's somebody else?
It's somebody else. It has to be another firm, yes.
Do you understand?
I understand, I understand the rotation, but how does that benefit the city if, by, I, I understand that it's going based on the ordinance that was in place. Is that correct?
I'm sorry?
It's, the rotation is based on the ordinance that's in place.
The rotation is, is based on the, the amount of work that is given to each engineering and surveying firms. If I'm not mistaken, at the beginning of the year, I, I presented another agenda with, with some other streets, okay? It happens that now that we have more funding, we're allocating funds for Jefferson Street. We didn't have, we didn't have these funds available, that's why we, we didn't present this, this scope to, to AmbuTech. So now that we have the money, now we're coming before you to present this, this next street, which is Jefferson Street, to AmbuTech, and because it exceeds the threshold of thirty-five thousand in each City Commission approval.
No, I understand, I just don't understand the background as to why that ordinance was put in effect, because it prevents this from going out into...
But, under local government code, there's a section that we, back in, I believe I attached this, this here, by law, it used to be back in, if I remember, before two thousand and seven, the threshold for procurement was at fifteen thousand dollars, okay? There was, there was a resolution that was approved, let me see if we, if I attach that resolution.
Well, no, that, that's, I, I need the background on the resolution, that's what I'm not understanding. Why was that resolution passed? Because that's preventing these, these particular items to be sent out for bids.
So you, you, do you understand what she's saying? She's asking, you know, the rotation list exists, we, she, we get that, but why aren't these, why is there a rotation list? Why isn't, why aren't these jobs going out for bid? And that's what she's, what she's asking.
The fifteen thousand dollar threshold is, is, is the authority that was given to, that is given to me to authorize a work performance. The Commission last year changed it to thirty-five. This exceeds the thirty-five thousand dollar threshold. I don't know that really pertains to this. The Commission also passed a rotation list for engineering firms to do work for some of our streets. When we presented it, we identified the streets that these engineering firms would work on. Since then, we wanted, we want to add Jeff, West Jefferson as a viable street for this, and, but it just so happens that the rotation identifies AmbuTech as the next engineering firm on the rotation.
I understand the rotation, and I understand, but what I don't understand is why the ordinance was put into effect. That's what I'm not understanding.
You know, I, uh, Robert, let me, let me just, you know, my recollection and my understanding, when I kind of reviewed what, what you guys did, or the Commission, before we got on there, was, and I don't know if this is actually happening or not, but there is a rotation of different engineering firms, and my recollection was somehow, you know, there was an equalizer by saying how much money was going to go to each engineering firm with regards to the projects, so that everybody would share equally in the work and in the funds that were being utilized. Now, I don't know if that's correct or not.
No, the resolution that I was referring to, it was a resolution that was presented back in two thousand and eight to increase the threshold for the city.
Yeah, but that, that's not answering the question, my friend.
Okay.
Okay. The, the, the question that, that is before this Commission right now is, I don't care why you did it, but, you know, what is the purpose of doing it without going for bids? And I don't care about the fifteen thousand, I don't care about the thirty-five thousand, because that allows a little bit of flow to go through the city manager's office. But this is a fifty-nine thousand dollar award, and were other firms given, engineering firms given the opportunity to bid on this, and what, and if not, why not? That's the question.
Okay, let me, let me answer, let me give you a few answers. Under chapter twenty-two fifty-four of the local government code, it allows municipalities to qualify professional services, in this case, engineering and surveying services. So when the city wants to make an approach for, for professional services, we cannot ask for price. We need to qualify the firms first. In this case, what we did, we went out for statements of qualifications, and we qualified several firms. We put them on a rotation list, and then we negotiated at the end a, a rate, and that's what we're following. If you look on the analysis, we have a fixed rate of eight point five percent of the total construction cost that is paid the same to all the engineers and surveying companies to do work for the city. So to answer your question is, we did procure the services, because professional services are not procured by, by asking for a price. We need to qualify the companies first to be able to give them some work. In this case, it was, it was in such a way that all, all the engineering and surveying firms work on a rotation contract at the same rate. The, the rate is eight point five percent of the total construction cost of the design work.
I don't, you know, quite frankly, I don't think you answered the question. The reason, the reason being is, I know you have certain, you know, firms that are qualified as engineers for certain specifications, and I, and I realize that you have a certain rate of the eight point five percent. But how do we know that we, when you say we rotate, how do we know that everybody gets an equal opportunity to, to bid? And how do we know that, you know, one company doesn't get a greater majority of the monies that are being spent on those services versus another? That's the question.
No.
And is there any, any safeguards? And I think that's what, what Counselor over there is saying, is that she would like to know, she wants to have the reasoning behind why we're doing it the way we're doing it, and, and she has a total, full right to find out why. And I don't know that we're getting an explanation that we should.
These are professional services...
We understand that part.
And I, what, what, what is occurring here is that all the other companies on the rotation have, are currently actively working on city projects, city streets, engineering city streets. And, and when we decided to get on this street, AmbuTech, which is on the rotation list, does not have a project. So they are next for, for the city to offer a project to.
I'm going to make a motion to table this, because I personally need more information. I understand that they're next on the rotation. It's the background that's, that's giving me the problem.
That, that's fair enough. There's a motion to...
Yeah, I don't think you're answering her question.
Yeah, and I, and I think, I think we should, you know, there's a, there's a motion to table. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. If this motion passes, I would suggest that perhaps maybe you get together with the Commissioners, whoever has a question about how it's going, have a full explanation, so they can fully understand and come back to us January the third. Do I, I'm going to ask for a vote for the motion to table. All those in favor say aye.
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 Nay.
Okay, you've got four ayes and two nays, the motion carries. It'll be tabled, and please place it on the agenda for January the third, so that we don't stop any progress, okay?
Okay.
Robert, when was this project going to be started?
It cannot start unless we, we, we allow AmbuTech to start with the design work. And just for the record, it's always been, it's always been the, the case where we, I mean, the Engineering Department, they approve equal amount of work for each engineering and, and surveying firm.
Robert, Robert, it's, it's the tenth question. I think if you satisfy these ladies, and, and, I mean, we, we hear what you're saying.
That's fine.
And so, I don't, I don't think two weeks is going to make a whole lot of difference on this project, but the second token is, you know, I think these Commissioners are entitled to, to, to have their answer, their questions answered, and fully, and not by having answered another question, which is not pertinent to what we have before the table, okay? And if we can do that, and, and provide it for all Commissioners, because I think, I think, and myself, because I think that would be good for all of us to learn, okay?
Okay, I'll bring it back.
Item twenty-five, consideration in action to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of video conferencing equipment for the Brownsville Public Library System.
Okay, on this agenda, the request of the Library Public Information Department Director, Jerry Hitchcock, the Purchasing and Contract Services Department solicited DIR proposals for the subject procurement. Under section seven, ninety-one point zero twenty-five, under contracts of purchases, the Texas Government Code, the bidding requirement has been satisfied by the Texas Local Government Code under the Department of Information Resources, once again, the DIR Department, an agency with whom the City of Brownsville has entered into a inter-local agreement, and the section seven ninety-one point zero twenty-five is attached. The Public Library Department has worked together with inside networking representatives to develop technical system specifications for video conferencing requirements for the subject project. The project consists of the purchase, delivery, and installation of ten video conferencing control stations at the Brownsville Public Main Library. The recommendation that I have is to award a contract for the purchase, delivery, and installation of video conference equipment for the Brownsville Public Library Systems to Inside Network of Tempe, Arizona, in the amount of seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and ninety cents. This procurement reflects DIR contract pricing. Funding is available for this procurement through a grant received from the Texas State Library and Archives Commission. The administration of the public, of the Public Library Department concurs with this recommendation.
Do I hear a motion?
And there's no local match for this grant, so it's a hundred percent.
Yeah, okay, no, no money coming out of our pocket, guys.
Motion to approve.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item twenty-six, consideration in action to award a contract for renewal of maintenance and software support for the Brownsville Municipal Court.
At the request of the Municipal Court Administrator Marina Solese, the Purchasing and Contracting Services Department receive a quote from Tyler Technologies for the court management software. Under, under the general provisions of Local Government Code, section two fifty-two point zero twenty-two, under captive replacement parts or components of the equipment, this proposal is exempt from, from competitive bidding. The recommendation is to award a contract for the maintenance renewal of court case management software for the Brownsville Municipal Court to Tyler Technologies of Dallas, Texas, for a total price of thirty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-one cents. Funding for this procurement will be derived from the Court Technology Fund Account zero one, three forty-one, eighty-three. The administration of the Municipal Court Department concurs with this recommendation. It's just a continuation renewal of the, of the maintenance to the software.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. It's your turn, Commissioner.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Okay, I assume everybody agrees. Motion carries.